Welcome to the candidate forum for North Oaks City Council. Today, we are combining a forum for two seats, for the regular seats and one special election seat. So you'll be electing two candidates for the regular seat and one candidate for the special election seat. I'm Heidi Boyd. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of the Whiteboro Lake area, and I will be your moderator today. I do not live in North Oaks. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization which encourages citizens to participate in government. Our mission is to support voter education and voter rights. We do not support or oppose any candidate or political party. Our goal is to encourage citizens to learn more about the positions of the candidates who will be on your ballot. All candidates who filed to run for these positions were invited to participate. Today, with us, we have Brian Clapper for the regular seat, and Brad Breckie and Andrew Gaspar for the special election seat. To begin, each candidate will introduce themselves by name and make an opening statement of up to one minute. Our timekeeper will show warning signs of 30 and 15 seconds and then a stop sign. At that time, the candidates can finish their sentence. For the opening statement today, candidates will respond in alphabetical order by last name and also by the seat. So we'll start with the regular seat and then the special election seat. Thereafter, the order of the speaking will be rotated. Candidates will have one minute to respond to each question. Candidates, you don't have to use the full minute. You can say what you have to say and be done, and that will allow time for more questions. Each candidate will also have three opportunities to clarify information or rebut another candidate's responses. Each rebuttal is limited to 30 seconds, and a candidate may use only one rebuttal for each question. When questions are finished, candidates will have one minute for their closing statement, and that statement will be done in reverse alphabetical order by last name. The questions for this forum were received in advance from the public and reviewed by a committee of League of Women Voter Members. We will not use any questions that are unclear, hostile, or of personal nature. We may consolidate questions that fall into the same general topic area. All questions submitted are the property of the League of Women Voters. So we are going to start with our opening comments, and we will start with Brian Clapper.
Great. I'm Brian Clapper, and I'm running for the North Oaks City Council. My wife and I chose to live in North Oaks for the peace and quiet and to be closer to my parents, who have lived here for 26 years, but mostly moved here for our kids. There's no doubt that North Oaks is the best community in the Twin Cities to raise a family, and our focus should be on prioritizing safe roads for their benefit and stewardship of our natural resources to preserve our unique character for generations to come. I'm a former journalist who spent more than a decade covering small boards and councils like ours, and I understand how good government works. I know the importance of open communication, of listening to constituents, and of a pragmatic and thoughtful approach to issues, big and small. For the past decade, I've worked in the real estate industry, first as an agent and now as a broker, so I'm intimately aware of the roles that location and community play in the values of our homes. That sense of community is what keeps generations returning to North Oaks, and I'd like to keep it that way and work to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Brad Breckie.
Greetings. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for setting this up and the chance to meet the other candidates. Much appreciated. I'm running for the North Oaks City Council, two-year term. A little bit about myself: I was born in Rochester, Minnesota, attended the University of Minnesota undergrad and law school, went on to marry my wife in 1980. We have two boys. We lived in Shoreview for 20 years, where we raised the boys. My career has taken me a different path. I've been head of security for Target Corporation, the Mayo Clinic, and worked in the FBI on partnerships. We moved to North Oaks in 2018 to take advantage of the wonderful community, the nature, and have had the fortunate of our children. Our youngest son and his family and six grand-- or three grandchildren move in with us or move into North Oaks in the last session.
Thank you. And next, Andrew Gaspar.
Yes, hi. My name is Andrew Gaspar. I'm running for the two-year seat of the city council. My wife Nina and I moved up here 10 years ago. We have four children, now aged 11 to 18, and we moved to North Oaks for one reason, which is to get our kids outdoors more and to get them outdoors year-round. North Oaks has greatly exceeded our expectations in terms of a place to raise our family. My son, my oldest son, grew up listening to an owl outside his window every night when he went to sleep. We have a family of eagles that nest in our tree every year. I have story after story about that, and it's a fantastic place. So why I'm running? I love the original vision of North Oaks. I'm running for the same reason I moved up here, which is the beautiful nature, the small government footprint, and sort of the system of small government and individual responsibility that really focuses on putting nature first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we will move to our first question, which will go first to Brad Breckie. The question is, what skills and experience do you have that make you uniquely qualified to be a city council member?
So my background has been working in large organizations. A couple things about that. I look to bring decisions in a collaborative manner. You have to seek multiple stakeholders to make informed decisions. Along with that, my background is in security, and it is one of the initiatives I have in North Oaks, has been functioning with over the last couple of years. In fact, I serve on the North Oaks Safety Committee. Beyond that, I'm a tremendous believer in partnerships, and that is part of what I did in different roles, where I officially did it for the FBI with U.S. corporations. I've done it with Target in our many stores as we grew. And at Mayo Clinic, it was especially important in the city of Rochester.
Thank you. Next, we go to Brian Clapper.
Sure. I spent a decade in the newspaper industry, covering small government boards, city councils, school boards, county boards, state legislature. And my career took me to be the vice president of a portion of a national publishing company, where I ran all of the operations in Michigan for them, two daily newspapers, three weekly newspapers. So I understand complexity. I understand budgets. I understand working with others and working through partnerships. But mostly, I understand the importance of asking good questions, and I think that our members of the city council need to seek out the best data they can and ask questions, probing questions, and really get to the bottom of the issues and to make the best decisions possible.
Thank you. And lastly, Andrew Gaspar.
Sure. So my early career, I spent in city planning and finance, and I have a master's degree in city planning. I also have a master's degree in business with a concentration in finance. More recently, my wife and I started a small business. It's a-- it was a dry cleaner. It was a service business, and we grew it from a very small operation to metro-wide operations serving 80 cities. We sold that business two years ago to the market leader, and I think the small business experience is pretty relevant to the job I'm interviewing for right now. In a small business, you solve all sorts of problems. You have to deal with all sorts of people and personalities, and you have to have common sense all the time. But the biggest part of it is, when you run a business, everything falls on you. If the boiler breaks, if the driver doesn't show up, that's all on you. And I think, in a government representative, I think that's something people deserve to have, as somebody that'll stand up and take responsibility for results.
Thank you. The next question, we'll go first to Brian Clapper, and the question is, what previous community involvement have you had in North Oaks?
Sure. I was one of the original members of the Beach Commerce Task Force to help improve our beach. Did some great work. I ultimately got too busy to continue on that, but really had a great time getting to know more neighbors, getting involved and seeing immediate results for our efforts. You know, the beach had been neglected for quite a while, and throughout the summer, we got a new dock, we got four paddle boards, we got a new canoe. That happened after I left to focus on other things, but it was a really great experience just in a short period of time, and I got to know a lot of people and do some good work, so I appreciated doing that.
Thank you. The question next goes to Andrew Gaspar.
Sure. So my involvement in North Oaks, we've lived there for 10 years, tightly involved with kids' sports, obviously, with a growing family, so I volunteered for the Mounds View Hockey Association for many years. For the North Oaks Blast Soccer Club, has been a big part of my life. And then, another sort of piece of our involvement is, we live in North Oaks, one of North Oaks' most historic homes. It's one of the original Hill family homes, so we've spent a lot of time and effort, energy, and money in restoring that home and keeping that, because it's sort of a living piece of North Oaks history.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, Brad Breckie.
As I mentioned, I've served for several years on the North Oaks Safety Committee, North Oaks Homeowners Association, helping inform decisions around some of the efforts to keep us safe. So this could include roads, it could include emergency management, and it could include, of course, criminal activity. I've also been involved with the-- my wife and I have joined the North Oaks James Shenhill Historical Society to help preserve the legacy of this great community. My background is a historian, and it is fascinating to be part of that and learn how this community originated, its vision, and how it continues. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to question three, and the question will go first to Brad Breckie. If elected, first, what would be your top three priorities for the city? And second, how would you move these priorities forward?
The top three I have listed are safety and security, and again, that includes roads, emergency management, and other activity. The focus on natural resources, how to protect and preserve those, it's part of the legacy here, part of the original vision. And the third is community engagement. The need to, as North Oaks reaches capacity, as some of the demographics begin to change, as some of the challenges exist, how do we better communicate, reach out, and be more visible in governance? The approaches I would take are through the existing city council, which I look more as a convening organization, to bring people together, also looking at how to better leverage technology to reach and touch people, and then personal engagement, meeting people where they're at and talking to them, listening.
Thank you. The question next goes to Andrew Gaspar.
Sure. And so, I think this question needs to be understood in the context of how North Oaks is governed, so I'm going to give that as a little background. There is a city council, and there's also a homeowners association. The homeowners association actually has much more responsibility and much more power than the city council. It owns and manages all the roads, all the recreational areas, all the shoreland, and it does all the architectural review for the city. The city council itself is limited to really public services, like police and fire, which we contract for, emergency response, and utilities. So given those responsibilities, my primary focus is on maintaining the natural environment of North Oaks and not substantially changing our structure, continuing to protect that, focusing on emergency response times of police and fire, and then upgrading our utilities, which I think we have a lot of opportunities to upgrade our utilities based on changing technology.
Thank you. And lastly, to Brian Clapper.
Well, my number-one priority is speed enforcement. We do have an issue with speeding, particularly on West Pleasant and East Pleasant Lake Road and also East Oaks Road. And I'd like the city to investigate some creative solutions to that, whether those are speed enforcement or speed awareness cameras that don't issue citations or fines but make people aware when their vehicle's been speeding. My second priority is improving the communication between the city and the citizens, and I don't know exactly how we're going to do that, whether the best resource or the best solution is regular town forums, whether it's some sort of online forum. There's got to be a better way that the city council and the people in the community can communicate with each other. And my third priority is planning for the future. That's not necessarily, you know, an involved process at this point, but at least determining where we want to go, I think, is something, a conversation we need to have.
Thank you. The next question will go first to Andrew Gaspar.
Yeah.
And the question is, how will you solicit feedback from the community and engage with residents?
Oh, sure. So that's something I've thought a lot about. So I'm not a political professional, and the way I'm running for office is I'm talking to as many people as possible. In North Oaks, that's very interesting, because North Oaks is really many separate, distinct communities. They have different interests, different needs, different levels of amenities, and so you really have to talk to people broadly, reach out to them to get their opinions, because they're all different. I have a lot of experience with this, because I used to run a customer service business. We had thousands of customers. Customers do this thing called complaining. A complaint is a gift when you run a customer service business. They're teaching you how to run your business better. So I appreciate complaints, I appreciate feedback, and I consider that the job. There's one more bit I want to get into, but I think I'm going to run out of time, about the openness of our process, which I've heard a lot of residents' concerns about a lack of openness in the city council process, so I will get into that at some point.
Thank you. The question next goes to Brad Breckie.
I think this is critical. It is part of good governance to have good dialogue, good information coming back and forth. From my experience in the workforce, I practiced management by walking around, as it was called. The best way to actually understand where people are at, what their perspective is, what their concerns are, is you talk to them. There are other formal channels to pursue, and I think we can do more creatively as an organization. As I mentioned, I see the city council as a convening organization. It can bring, whether it's homeowners, government officials, some of the other subdivisions, together in dialogue. Openness and transparency is key in any governing body. It is absolutely essential.
Thank you. And lastly, to Brian Clapper.
Well, I've already started using one tool that I'd like the city to adopt, and that is online surveys. They're very inexpensive, they're very easy to administer and set up, and already on my campaign website, I have a survey that people can fill out and tell me their priorities for the city. That's a tool that's so easy to use, I don't know why we're not using it now as a city, beyond paying for very expensive cellphone surveys and things like that in the past. So I'd like the city to look into using that as just one tool, but we need to improve it across the board.
Thank you. The next question--
I think we have a rebuttal here.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
It's more a clarification. I don't want to rebut. So what I wanted to clarify is, I've heard from a lot of citizens, they have a concern about how the current council is operating, and it's been several things. One is, too much is happening in closed session. Another is that decisions are coming up suddenly without proper warning. A third is that data is not dispersed properly, data supporting decisions. And so I'm getting a lot of questions about decisions made by the council and what the basis for those decisions is, and there seems to be a lot of confusion, and that's something I'd like to clean up.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we'll go first to Brad Breckie. What are your thoughts or positions on the future of roads in North Oaks, particularly the proposal to widen streets?
It's a very good question. I would say I have not informed an opinion at this point, because I don't have enough information and don't understand where the constituents, the residents, are at. I do know our infrastructure is aging. Capacity is being filled up in our city. There's a mix now of additional uses for the roads, probably more walkers, bikers, more people out there. There's safety concerns. I could not give a point of view yet until I actually learn more from those involved and understand what the options or alternatives are. I think, at its heart, we want to preserve the nature, the vision of North Oaks in the community it is, but we also want to keep people safe, and we want to have whatever's put in place last for many years to keep the cost down to the city over time.
Thank you. The question now goes to Brian Clapper.
Well, I do have an opinion on it. Wider roads would dramatically alter the character of North Oaks, and they'd also encourage speeding, both of which would be detrimental to our community. When our roads were laid out originally, they took the skill and care to wind them around heritage trees, and I think we need to honor that. And we do not need to remove trees in order to widen the roads, or we would have to remove trees to widen the roads, and so I think we shouldn't, we should avoid doing that at all costs.
Thank you. And lastly, Andrew Gaspar.
Sure. So, and I have a background in city planning, and I am a fan of narrow roads. I think North Oaks was very thoughtfully laid out with the purpose of protecting nature, slowing traffic, and having an infrastructure that's inexpensive to keep up. So I think our narrow roads worked really well for us. And if you look at other areas, the direction really is in narrowing roads, not widening them. Minneapolis has narrowed a lot of its roads. It's a very effective traffic calming technique, and it'll help us in North Oaks in a couple ways. We're getting increased traffic right now, and the narrow roads really slow that down. There's some increasing concerns about crime as well, and again, more traffic flowing through creates more opportunities for crime, so it's a solution to that as well. So I'm just a fan of the way North Oaks was laid out originally, and I think it still works for us today. We haven't really changed in terms of our land uses, so I love the system as we have it.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question, which will go first to Brian Clapper. Do you support the proposal for citywide public water and sewer service in North Oaks? And why or why not?
I think it's a scary reality for those of us who plan on being in North Oaks for the next 50 to 40 to 50 years, that there is a lifespan for the sewer and water that we currently have, our septic systems and our wells. And it's not a fun thing to think about, but I do think we need to, it'd be better to have a plan than to not have a plan and need it. And I think this is something we need to be looking at as a 30- to 40-year project, not a 10- to 20-year project, and I think we need to start having those conversations now.
Thank you. Next, Andrew Gaspar.
You know, I agree with Brian. It does require a lot of long-term planning, but I will say, you know, most of the country in terms of geography uses septic systems and uses wells, and it works perfectly well. You know, the gentleman I learned physical planning from in graduate school lived in an area very similar to North Oaks, and he said, you know, this is a, this is a very sustainable system, a very sustainable way to live in nature is septic and well systems. So I'm a fan of what we have now. I think we do need updating, and we do need study, and we probably need more support for residents to understand how the systems work and how they can be improved and renewed.
Thank you. And lastly, to Brad Breckie.
Yes, I think it's a consideration, as the infrastructure ages out, the potential environmental challenges. What are the options? What are the costs? How do you plan for it, over what period of time? I think it's just, at this stage of North Oaks life, 75 years into it, time to reassess. Having said that, I go back to the more we can retain the unique nature of North Oaks, it is what has defined this community all these years. We don't want to lose that, but we also want to have infrastructure for families going into the future.
Thank you. This next question is going to go first to Andrew Gaspar, and it's a follow-up, and it's what I'm going to call a lightning rod question, or lightning round question. So if you could just respond yes or no to the question. So the question first to Andrew Gaspar is, would you support creating a citywide database on septic systems, cataloging their age, type, performance, including testing? Yes or no?
Yes.
And Brad?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes, and small caveat, I'd like to know more about what you mean by testing.
And including testing of the septic system?
If it's the current test that we already use, then yes. If it's more intrusive, then no.
Next question will go first to Andrew Gaspar, and the question is, do you think that speeding and running stop signs are issues in North Oaks?
Yes.
And why, and not, you'll have a little more time, so not lightning question, but why or why not? And if so, what would you do to address the issues?
So I do think it's an issue. It's been a very common issue, as I've talked to residents. I think, in part, we're already addressing it with our road system being narrow, tends to slow down traffic. I think enforcement is key. I think we have to enforce our speed limits fairly thoroughly. I think there's additional traffic calming measures we can take to slow down traffic, and I believe part of our problem right now with traffic has to do with Apple Maps and Google Maps. We're becoming more of a pass-through for folks, because we're often the fastest route between point A and point B, and I think there's things we can do to sort of slow that down, because we are a residential area, so we don't really want to become a pass-through for traffic.
Thank you. The question next goes to Brian Clapper.
Yes, speeding is definitely an issue. In fact, it's my number-one priority to look into. Like I said before, I think there are creative solutions we can look into and we should be investigating. And like Andrew said, our narrow roads play a role in keeping the speed lower, and like on roads like mine, you just can't physically speed unless you were really, really trying to. But some of the major roads going through, we definitely need to step up enforcement.
Thank you. And lastly, Brad Breckie.
Yes, it is an issue. I do think it has become probably more of an issue, as I look out over the last few years, see more strollers and school buses out there. It's become a risk for children in particular. Speeding, going to stop signs, there are traffic calming measures, there's different signage, there's enforcement, but some of this also is just the community having to step up as a community and say, we want to respect the rights of everybody and manage our driving habits in a different way. We're from a positive side, less about enforcement. That is the view I have. I mean, I still love it, though, walking North Oaks, you can wave at people as they go by. Lived in a lot of different places, it doesn't happen, it happens here.
Thank you. The next question will go first to Brad Breckie, and the question is, what steps would you take, if any, to preserve the natural environment of North Oaks?
This, to me, is another critical facet of our community. I think we have to better understand what are some of the risks to the environment right now, whether it's diseased trees or the watershed itself being at risk. I mean, we have responsibility internal to our community to protect it. We also have external neighbors that benefit from our watershed and what we do. I think we might even have a missed opportunity here to be creative in what we do with this natural resource, perhaps show other communities how we can take steps, whatever those be. And I don't have subject matter expertise, but it is a high priority, it's my, one of my priorities, and it's a focus I would have on the council.
Thank you. Next, to Brian Clapper.
I think one of the, the people who live in North Oaks currently, I don't feel like there's a whole lot of pressure internally to damage our natural environment. We all really care about our forests and our lakes and our water, but we do need to resist some outside pressure to change, things like increasing density, things like changing the roads to make it easier for certain vehicles. We need to resist those forms of pressure, and we need to stand strong in the core beliefs that we have as a community in terms of maintaining what we have. And certainly, we need to be looking into understanding what diseases our trees-- And certainly, we need to be looking into understanding what diseases our trees might be facing and other pressures, things like the water coming into Pleasant Lake and Charlie Lake, making sure that those are kept clean. But first priority, I think, would be ensuring that we as a community are resisting outside pressure to change.
Thank you. And lastly, to Andrew Gaspard.
Yes, so in terms of preserving the environment, our response to new development is very important. North Oaks is mostly built out at this point, so that's going to be limited, but our response to new development and sort of calls for more aggressive infrastructure changes, I think is key in us preserving the environment in North Oaks. Working with our neighbors is very important, and I understand that we work jointly with other cities around us on issues like water quality, and I think that needs to be continued. And a big piece I hear people mention is just the quality of the water in our lakes, especially long-term residents, people who've been there 20 or 30 years, have said that the water's really deteriorated in terms of water you can use for swimming and boating and other activities. Wonder what the effect of that is on wildlife and all the animals that use the water, but it's definitely been a big detractor for people that live in North Oaks.
Thank you. So the next question will go first to Brian Clapper. The question is, do you support improvement to the terrain of the Pleasant Lake Walking Trail? Why not? And if you do support improvements, how would you move that forward?
That would be outside of the scope of the city council. The NOAA is responsible for the trails. As a daily user of the trail, I would love to see it fully connected, but I know that there are hurdles to that. From what the city can do, I just am not certain the city can do anything about that.
Thank you. The question next goes to Andrew Gaspard.
Sure. And so this is an interesting question, and this is an experience I have a lot with talking to residents, including long-term residents. We have this sort of complicated government system where we have a city government, but we have a homeowners' association which controls all the land with the residents, has most the responsibility, has the bigger budget. So the trail around Pleasant Lake is managed by the homeowners' association. Now, I take the role that as a city council member, people don't want all this inside-baseball stuff. So if people talk to me about stuff, I listen, and I'm going to advocate for what I think. I think the trail around Pleasant Lake could use some help. The biggest problem with the trail around Pleasant Lake right now is massive tree roots that trip you when you're walking or trip you up when you're biking, and it's starting to deteriorate along the lake as well. So I think it's something that the homeowners' association is going to have to take a look at over the next couple of years.
Thank you. And to Brad Breckie.
I will echo both candidates and say, it is probably out of the strict purview of the city council, but it is an opportunity for the council, again, to bring people together to convene and talk about these with the homeowners' association, with residents that have concerns. To me, again, this is one of the phenomenal resources of this community. To help maintain that trail in the proper way is something that we have to invest in. I don't feel I would be in a position to dictate how that looks, but I do think it is, again, another piece of the role the council could play. I mean, I look at our lakes, our woods, it's almost a mini state park, national park, and there are a lot of voices come to the table when they make decisions around things in the parks. We could take the same approach as the city council.
Thank you. The next question will go first to Brad Breckie, and the question is, what would be your approach to working with other North Oaks council members who may not share your outlook on controversial or complicated issues?
My approach would be open and direct dialogue. I actually would not expect most people to share my perspective on everything. In fact, getting back from my work experience, I preferred to have a leadership team around the table with me that did not think, look, act like me, because I needed those different perspectives to inform the direction we went. Quite frankly, if everybody was like me, it'd be pretty boring. So the, having city council members with different points of view, different opinions, different priorities, to me is just natural, and it's what you actually seek when you govern.
Thank you. Next to Andrew Gaspard.
Sure. So, you know, this is the reality of the world, is that we don't all agree, and we have to figure out how to do things together. The challenges I've seen on the current city council is, they're not as data-intensive or fact-intensive as I'd like to be. And where I've been on boards and other organizations where we've had to solve problems together and we've had different points of view, usually the piece that binds us together is to have a common set of facts and a common set of data. And as we propose solutions, we measure them against that data to see whether what we've proposed is good or what we've proposed is bad. That's where I would try to seek common ground with everyone else. We might not have the same opinions, but if we use the same data and we agree on how to keep score with that data, then we know whether what we've proposed is going to work or not.
Thank you. And lastly, to Brian Clapper.
Yeah, I would echo what Andrew said. I think if we all are working with the best data possible, we can collectively as a group make the best decisions. No one currently on the council that I know of, and nobody on the ballot this November that I know of, wants to drastically change North Oaks. And I think we all want the best for our community. The solution to that, or what we need, is the absolute best information, the best data to work with, and then I think it becomes far easier for us to get to a solution together.
Thank you. The next question goes first to Andrew Gaspard, and the question is, what steps will you take to ensure transparency and accountability in city government?
Oh, sure. And this is a very important point to me. I think I mentioned before that, you know, I used to run a customer service business. Feedback is very important. Complaints are golden, that's the job, and listening to people is important. As a council, it's important that we set ourselves up in such a way that the community can give us actual valuable feedback. And what that means is, we need to present data in a clear and open manner. We can't be doing too many things in closed session. That's been a complaint I've heard from many residents, that a lot of things happen in closed session. When we propose solutions, we have to have sort of clear reasons of why we're doing what we're doing. We have to do things in a timely way so that people can have time to respond and give real valuable feedback. And we have to present data that maybe doesn't support our point of view as well. So, I mean, that's how I would encourage openness and transparency and really valuable citizen feedback.
Thank you. Next to Brian Clapper.
Well, I started my career as a journalist covering public boards 23 years ago, and from the get-go, it was about understanding the open meetings law, how things are supposed to be conducted in public. And so I would be somebody, if the council is trying to do things in private that should be done in public, I will raise that flag and say, we should be having this discussion openly and publicly. And again, going back to things like surveys, there are a lot of tools out there that we can increase the information going back and forth between the community and the council, and I would look to implement a lot of those things.
Thank you. And lastly, Brad Breckie.
Yes, I mean, there are formal laws and such that require transparency or openness, but I think it's much more than that. I think as city council, serving in government, you have an obligation or responsibility to your constituents, to your residents. You also, to make decisions, have to be informed by them. It is just part of the process, it's how our country was set up, is their points of view, their priorities have to come in to us. We likewise then have to be in a position to show what we are working on, what's the decision process behind that, so that they can weigh how we get to the point of decision and hear from them all along the way, not after it's done, but while it's happening.
Thank you. The next question will first go to Brian Clapper, and the question is, looking ahead to the next 10 years, what are the biggest long-term planning needs that you would like to address and why?
Within the next 10 years, you know, the things I'm focused most intensely on are the things happening beyond what I think needs to happen in the next 10 years. A lot of what is happening in the next 10 years is already set, and we just need to make good decisions around our planning, our 2040 plan, to ensure that we're following the guidelines of that and working closely with the Planning Commission to make sure those things happen.
Thank you. And next to Brad Breckie.
Yes, over the next 10 years, I would focus on the initiatives that I've already started around safety and security, especially around preparedness, whether that's for, around the roads, but in emergency management, I want to make sure the community is prepared to deal with whether it's medical, fire, or natural disasters better. Also along, that way, I think the planning for the infrastructure is going to be key over the next 10 years, is laying out what the future might look like for us, what are the options, what are the costs? And finally, I'd say, as a topic we've talked about, we have to improve communication. We have to find better ways to interact with the residents, either through technology or in person, and improve the flow of information back and forth.
Thank you. And lastly, to Andrew Gaspard.
So in terms of 10-year planning or planning beyond that, I think septic systems are something that gets mentioned quite often, and I think there's going to be a need to work with the community in transitioning those and improving those and keeping them in place and people having knowledge of that. That relates back to the other infrastructure planning we're looking at, so we're going to have to make some decisions about whether we're going to extend things like sewer and city water or not. That's a very expensive and large undertaking. Roads and trails, I think, are very important, particularly because our roads get mixed use, but we have a very large trail system. I'd like to see that trail system continue to get enhanced, because it takes, it takes foot traffic and bike traffic that probably is better not on the roads, off it into a safe environment. So those are the major areas for planning, I think, in the next 10 years.
Thank you. So this is our last question before the closing comments, and it's another lightning round question, so you can respond just yes or no, and it's going to go first to Andrew, then to Brad, then to Brian. And the question is, there are reports that coyotes have attacked a number of dogs in North Oaks. Would you support the relocation of coyotes in North Oaks, from North Oaks? Andrew?
And I can't tell you why I say this or that.
Sure, let's do it. Let's do it as a full question.
So I'm going to say, no. So I've talked to three people that have dealt with coyotes. I'm going to say no. We have coyotes on our property as well. And I'm going to say no, because according to my wildlife biologist friends, if you relocate them, more will move into the area. You can scare coyotes off your property, so that's generally what the DNR will tell you to do, is make the coyotes frightened.
Thank you. And next to Brad Breckie.
I will echo Andrew's answer, no, because you can remove them, but they will come back.
Yeah, Andrew explained it, I think, for all three of us, because I would also say no.
Oh, come on.
You did all the heavy lifting for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all of the questions that we had, and so we're going to go into closing comments, and we're going to go in reverse alphabetical order, and you'll each have one minute, and we're going to start with Andrew Gaspard.
Oh, sure. So, closing comments. So I'm, I am a non-politician, and the way I've approached this is, I feel like it's my job to talk to as many of my neighbors as possible. It's actually a wonderful process. You meet all sorts of people you wouldn't have met otherwise, you make new friends, you learn things, so I really love this process. What I find, talking to people in North Oaks of sort of all stripes and all ages, is they all lead with the natural environment. That's why they're there, they love the open space, they love the relaxed sort of life we have up there, but everyone kind of loves nature. I love the original vision of the Hill family. The Hill family set up North Oaks focusing on the environment, on a small government footprint, and sort of on a system of personal responsibility. And I think that's still a great vision for us, and it's our job to update that going forward, but to continue that focus.
Thank you. Next to Brad Breckie.
Yes, North Oaks is unique. It has a legacy, it had a design around a vision that sustained for 75 years. Few places do that. I look at, though, there is a bit of challenge in front of us as North Oaks reached capacity, some of the demographics are changing, younger families, different needs. It is incumbent upon the council to play a lead role in bringing people together, to convene, to look at what are the solutions going forward, the planning process, which is actually one of the council's roles, and to help lay the groundwork for the next 75 years. I would welcome the opportunity to be part of that council and help inform our constituents, our stakeholders, and help drive the process forward.
Thank you. And Brian Clapper.
Well, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and the important work that you all do. You know, apart from the judges on the backside of the ballot, the city council race is the most commonly left blank by voters, and I think part of the responsibility for that, part of the blame for that lies with us. We need to be reaching out to voters where they are and getting as much information to them as possible, because I'm so thrilled that Andrew and Brad both participated today. It's why I've filled out every survey I've been sent, from the North Oaks News to the St. Paul Chamber and NPR. It's why I've participated in every forum and opportunity I've been invited to, and why I'll continue to respond to every call and email and text and social media comment, even the not-so-nice ones. Good government requires full participation and enthusiastic competition, which is why I'm thrilled that all three city council seats up for grabs this November have multiple candidates for voters to choose from. As someone who plans to call North Oaks home for the next 40 or, God willing, 50 years, it gives me great hope for the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes our forum for the North Oaks City Council positions. Thank you, candidates, for your participation. Our website, l w v dash w b l a dot org, has listings for all of our candidate forums and links where you can submit questions for those forums. You can view the recordings of this, the recording of this forum and all our forums on our YouTube channel, League of Women Voters, Waipar Lake Area. Thank you, and remember to vote. Early voting has started. Election Day is November 5th.